Good evening, everyone. It is January fifteenth, seven P M. This is a meeting of the Sherburne zoning board of appeals. Do we have a quorum? I'm gonna call Roll. Mr. Fitch?
President.
Mr. Novak?
Here.
For Labby?
Present.
Mr. McBride, present. We have a quorum. The full board is here. So the first item on the agenda is sort of just an administrative one that I added of late, just on Monday. I just, based on some communications that have occurred of late in relation to some other meetings that we've had and some other submissions, there seems to be some dissatisfaction and confusion around the way the materials were submitted and the potential misinterpretation, you know, by the board, but by ourselves and by others. And so I think I forwarded you all an email to this effect. And so I guess I just want to open this up to just a very brief discussion this evening with respect to our zoning board of appeals procedures with respect to accepting and publishing materials just to make sure that they are identified in such a way so as not to cause confusion or any misperceptions. So I think I did forward that email to the board. I don't know if you have anyone had any sort of perspective around our discretion to impose, I would say, filters to make sure that certain that all submissions are clearly represented. Rick, Jonathan, I don't know if you have any perspective here. You've been sort of longer tenured in the space, so I ask you first. If not, I sort of ask Todd second.
I'd like to say first, Zach, I've left my employment and my old law firm address doesn't work.
Okay.
I don't think you have my new one because I didn't get an email from you.
Okay, just make sure I have that, or I'll get it from Jean. I don't know if I missed it, but.
Okay, well, let me try to step in for my brother, Mr. Fitch, and if I can try to summarize, Zach, and there was a report on another matter, Brush Hill, that was submitted by a third-party Stantec to one of our local boards. And what was submitted to us came in in two tranches, one in the morning and one just before the hearing. And the morning tranche was parts of the report, not all of it. And the evening tranche was all the report. And I think one can fairly say that the applicant objected to the submission of less than all the report. And as a process standpoint, it would seem to me, Zach, that, you know, whenever anybody, board member or not, is submitting things to us done by a third party, they ought to include the whole thing or say, why not? You know, the exhibits for this were nine hundred pages, so I left off the exhibits, something, something like that. Just so that it's clear in our record, because Jeanie does such a good job of publishing everything we get, what was submitted and why. And it's probably also good practice for anybody on any board in town when submitting something to say, as many people almost always do, I'm speaking for myself versus I'm speaking for my board. And I guess I don't think, Zach, those should necessarily be former, formal rules, but more practices that we'd exhort everybody to observe. But other people may have different or more strongly held views.
Yeah, I just don't even know if we have discretion to impose, you know, what our discretion is to impose sort of procedural rules with respect to public hearings. I don't know if you had a perspective on that. I don't want to go down a rabbit hole and consume too much of folks' time tonight, but I did want to sort of open this up here again, just sort of make sure that we are addressing any concerns of, you know, the way that we're conducting the open hearing, not to, you know, cause, you know, confusion, so.
Well, if I might, in this case, it was a problem that self-corrected. There was a problem with the document that was submitted, and the applicant drew our attention to it. And we got the whole document. And that's it. So whoever submitted the incomplete document, I mean, it just, it's a, it's an impact on that person's credibility.
So I think I'm hearing from my board, at least from Jonathan and Rick so far, unless Todd has anything to sort of contribute that that we don't feel that we possibly need to impose any additional sort of standards or rules. Maybe we I think that's, that's the conclusion, right? We're sort of status quo and staying the course, and there's nothing sort of done for administrative standpoint.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I might.
Who's, I don't know who's speaking.
This is Todd. You probably don't recognize my voice. Still battling, battling an illness. I just like to share a few thoughts from my perspective. So our authority, or lack thereof notwithstanding, I would say that, at least from my perspective as a board member, is my, my standard and as an objective member of the board, that whenever information is being conveyed in either direction, if something is a truncated or a more succinct version of something, it ought to be communicated as such. And if a fuller version is available and it is intended to be shared and appropriate to be shared, it ought to be shared. And if it is forthcoming, it ought to be communicated as being forthcoming. And in the event, in the extreme example that was provided, where you have ninety-seven images, or let's just say that the file is too large to be transmitted via email, well, posting to our website is a perfectly good solution to sharing that information and doing so in a very effective way. So regardless of what board or what entity information is coming from, I would say that objectively, we want to be as open and transparent as possible and share as much information in its entirety as possible, as that is going to allow us to have the most productive use of everyone's time, both those volunteering, those on other boards, applicants, and the public. I believe that's in everyone's best interest.
Appreciate. Thank you, Todd. So I think from a administrative standpoint, I think we're again, I think that there's, we have, we have a perspective here, but I'm not hearing any need for, to, you know, make any sort of administrative changes to our procedures. That's, that's what I'm hearing. I see a nod from Rick and silence from Jonathan, so I'll take that as a.
I agree.
I agree as well, Zach. I'll put up the record. I mean, you do have a hand up. I don't know if you can see it.
Yep, I do. I just wanted to get to the board first and then I see Daryl has her hair raised. So Daryl, please, you know, feel free to talk, to speak to this issue.
I can only imagine what documents you're talking about. So here's here was my quandary. Information came in late. Must have been a Tuesday if the meeting was on a Wednesday. By the time I went through it in the morning, and again, I have other obligations during the day for work. The challenge to me was it's something that was not yet reviewed by the board. It was material being prepared by the agent, which is typically discussed to some degree with the board. There was different information than we expected, just in terms of breadth. I'm not talking content. We never know exactly what's going to be coming from the agents of the board. And I chose in the interest of what would be a reasonable amount of material to send out, and what usually gets sent out first are the deficiencies. And that's what was excerpted from what was provided, because I did have a chance to go through that, and it all looked reasonable. So I forwarded that on as a bite into the totality of the material so that the applicant would have the opportunity to have their consultants review it at the earliest possible time. Nothing was meant to obfuscate. Clearly, we had the rest of the information, but that's what the intent was. And unfortunately, I can't look at my email right now because I'm having a technical incompatibility with a new system in town. See whether I had copied Jeanie or not. I don't recall. Normally, we don't send to Z B A. The deficiencies go to the applicant. I don't know if the applicant forwarded on to. I really don't remember. So when we're in this challenge of something that's a draft, the board hasn't reviewed, are we following our usual protocols or are we following something else because of the Z B A process? So I'm happy with providing everything, but maybe I would have held on to it until the board had a chance to review it with an agent who had not done this kind of thing with the board previously and the other kinds of things that we would have wanted to see. So that's the explanation of it. I'm happy to alter our process, but I'm not sure timeliness over something that's a draft, the part that seems reasonable to release and move forward, whatever. That's all it was.
Well, I think, I think that's a good, I mean, I think we don't want drafts submitted, Daryl. That would obviously be, you know, I would never want a draft expert report submitted to court. That's what I liken this to. So I, you know, I think, I think drafts should not be provided. I think, just as a point of sort of hygiene, not law, you know, if there is an annotation or a selection from a complete report from, from, you know, acting in the capacity of the board, I think we would like to make sure that it's sort of coming from the full board versus like an individual opinion. I think that might be helpful just to make sure that it's all clear. I see Rick had his hand raised and then he dropped it. So maybe I answered his question, but you might want to have some more comments, so.
Yeah, no, I want to be sure, Daryl, that we weren't talking past each other. We weren't talking about a draft Board of Health decision. We were talking about a third-party report from Stantec. And I didn't think that was a draft.
Is hired as the health agent to the board.
Right.
They are an auxiliary mark because Mark's hours have been going over twenty hours a week, and we need to lower that. So.
I understand that. My question is, when you sent in the morning report, was that everything you had? Or was it excerpts of a larger?
No, I had, my recollection, and again, unfortunately, I can't do my emails at the moment. My recollection is that I said, here are the comments, you know, regarding additional elements needed for the plan or something to that effect, you know, or the deficiencies identified so that you can begin to look at them. I indicated that it was an excerpt of something, so.
Okay. Yeah, because I think the applicant's beef, if I can characterize it that way, was that, that at least in the applicant's view, the Board of Health had a complete report from Stantec and sent to the Z B A only part of it. And if that's not true, that's important.
I don't remember if I thought I had only sent it to to the applicant. So
Thank you.
I don't recall. It was in haste before I had other things to attend to. I wanted to get it out as early as possible, but it probably would have been worth holding off until we could have gone through our more normal process of review.
Appreciate dialogue, Daryl and zoning board. I think the conclusion here is, you know, maybe we, you know, maybe it's my responsibility more than anyone else's just to make sure that we have, before we post something, that it's marked appropriately to avoid confusion. But there doesn't seem to be a need for any sort of administrative rulemaking at this point. So with that, I don't want to take up everyone's time on this exciting topic. So moving forward, I think we have some other things to talk about. So regarding, I think it's matter number twenty-two-five dash one, the petition of James Rodcliff for modifications to a finding from section one point four point six granted April third to make changes and add in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at forty-two Whitney Street in Sherburne, which is in a residence B district. So Jean, do you have any plans to pull up regarding this and is the applicant here to discuss their petition? I think Paul, I think I see Paul making motions, but he's on mute.
Hi, I'm Paul Gutard from Cunningham, how you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Sorry, I'll be representing Jean Frack, if you can dispose. So I'm in remiss. I did not send a summary to Jeanine, but I do have one to show to support our finding.
Right, no, even verbal is fine, you know, whatever you have.
Back in August, while we were doing deconstruction of the main house, it became across upon some failed structural members and framing of the home that has been renovated over generations. And in turn, we had a project meeting with the architect, engineer of the project and with ourselves and to determine that a lot of the, a lot of the existing structure and framing was not salvageable and actually not safe. And I do have photographs to back up some of these conditions.
Wow.
Yeah, and in turn, yeah, so we did, we were able to incorporate some of it back into the new framing, but it was too far gone. Posts that were notched, posts that were not terminated correctly, posts that were rotted just from age, dry rot. And it just wasn't structurally sound. So unfortunately, we had to raise a lot of it down and put up new framing. But like I said, we did, we were managed able to capture some of the timbers and some of the framing. And since then, have gone back and just basically reframed the project back to what we submitted on, same footprint, same layout, just new framing where we weren't intending to do much as the new framing, so we thought we're going to have to do.
Right. So you're basically, this is a slight modification to finding we already had, which is to give you permission to renovate the home. But at this point, it's just the onion cutting got deeper, is what you're telling us, as happens in an old home, which is why I built a new one.
Yeah.
And so I drove by and I will attest to your very strategic and careful demolition. I was shocked at the care you took, frankly, from what I could see from the road. I applaud you for your attempt. I
Thank you.
lost my patience a long time ago with what I saw. And so I have no problem amending, you know, our previous ruling here, but I want to go to the board and see what their perspective is.
Thank you.
Rick?
Yeah, I think as long as this is, as long as we've got some documents or they can submit some documents after tonight, confirming it's exactly the same footprint and layout that we proposed, that I'd be strongly in favor of amending the prior finding because that's what we said was okay. I think it was in their interest to come back in because technically they were going to have zoning relief that didn't fit what was on the ground, and that was going to be a problem for them in the future. So I'm in favor of this corrective, corrective action.
Thank you.
I have the same opinion.
Great.
As do I. Nothing further to add. If there's no other material change to what had previously been presented, and I don't take exception to this modification.
I think the end, the end result is going to be the same. Is that right, Paul?
Yes, correct. All the same material, same layout. I do have updated structural plans with the stamp, and we do have the drawings, so I can submit, I already have as a P D F package, I can submit that to Jeanine.
And just for the record, I think I did speak to Chris Canny about this, and so I think, you know, he's on board with it as well. So with that, do I have a motion from my board? Rick is usually pretty artful with these, so I'm going to look to him first.
Mr. Good, I'll take a shot at it. Mr. Gutard, could you tell me the date on the new plans?
Okay, on the new plans, I'll have to share my screen. But it should be, the most recent set of CDs is twelve thirteen twenty-four.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, my motion is that we amend our prior one point four point six finding for forty-two Whitney Street to allow the construction to track the revised set of plans dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and otherwise our prior decision is unamended. That's my motion.
Seconded. All in favor? Mr. Fitch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Labby?
Labby, aye.
Novak?
Novak, aye.
McBride, aye. Congratulations. You can continue to move forward, and I hope the rest of the rebuilding goes well.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is a petition of Rebecca Elsie, D M C Architecture for a finding from section one point four point six to construct additions to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at twenty-six Maple Street, which is in a residence B district. Is there anyone here for the applicant that can provide an explanation of the petition here? And Jean, do you have any plans to share, possible, or does the applicant?
Good evening. Michael Collins. I am representing John and Elizabeth McCoy this evening, D M C architects, and happy to review the plans if, if they are called up. But it is a, if you're familiar with the property, it's a, it's a non-conforming lot.
It would be helpful if you, Mr. Collins, it would be helpful if you could pull up the plans if possible. I think it would just help, help the board and.
Did, does Jeanie have them?
I can, I can get them.
Thank you. It is, it is a very, very small buildable area. I'll describe it more once you see the site plan, but given the sixty-foot front, forty-foot side, thirty-foot rear, it provides for a a very small wedge of buildable area. House that is on the property now was, was built on a concrete slab that was a previous Legion building, I believe, back in two thousand and ten. And when it was built, it was required to conform and stay to that, to that footprint. What we are proposing is a, is a modest six hundred and fifty square foot addition plus a screened porch, excuse me, plus a covered porch. In addition to the side rear and, and front setback restrictions, there's also a septic system that we need to stay clear of as well. So the clients, the McCoys, are trying to eke out a little more living area out of, out of a very small house. It's only only a twelve or fifteen hundred square foot house, I believe. And the addition of this family room would make a big difference to their family and their life. You can see the proposed addition on the on the rear of the property, which is the family room. It's about six hundred and sixty square feet, thirty by twenty-two. And the front porch across the, the front. Scrolling up, you'll see the existing floor plans or scrolling down, I guess. You'll see the existing there is proposed. So where it's where the walls are shown in dark is the addition. And we have existing. Thank you very much. That's the existing with essentially one room and a little mudroom. The proposed family room is to go off the backside of that, which will give the family some separation and some living, additional living space, as well as storage and a mudroom and an entrance from the driveway. At some point, they would look to see if a garage was was a possibility. That's not part of this application. It may be on one of the plot plans. I know we removed it at some point. This one does not show it. But that's, that is not subject to this request for relief. We are at, it's, it's a sixteen thousand square foot lot. Currently, it's about a six, six, six point two percent lot coverage. That'll be increased to twelve percent. And we are not making any of the non-conformities any worse than what currently exists. I mean, the entire house is non-conforming, but we are we're, we're not making those non-conformities worse in any way. So looking to, looking for some relief in development of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Jeanie, can you pull up the plot plan so I can see the setbacks?
Hold on.
Jeanie, I might be able to do it if you're having trouble.
If you want to try it, Rick. If not, I can keep.
All right, let me, let me let me take a shot. Okay, hold on.
There it is.
You got it?
I got it.
Okay.
There it is. Can you see it?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, may I be heard?
Yes.
So, Mr. Collins, and Jeanie, can you zoom in a little bit? I know, I'm so whiny.
You are, and this is not downloaded, which could be a problem.
All right, all right, we'll, we'll do it without it zoomed in, but if it's fighting you off, don't worry about it. Mr. Collins, I think for purposes of Sherburne zoning, and correct me if I have it wrong, the big problem here is the fact that the existing building is only nine point seven feet off that off Green Lane over there to the east, right?
Correct.
It's all, it's all within the setback. And your new addition is also within the setback because it's twelve and a half feet back, but it's no closer than, you did a good job going no closer than the existing dwelling. And likewise, your porch going out the front is going to be within the existing setback, but it's no closer than the nine point seven.
Correct.
So, so board members, I think, consistent with what we've done for other similar properties on, on Whitney Street and Maple Street and others, is we could probably, if we chose, do a one point four point six finding here because it's not increasing the non-conformity.
Yeah, I agree with that, Rick. Thank you for that historical perspective. And yes, I agree with you. It is not increasing the non-conformity based on the plans that I'm seeing. So I'd be inclined to approve this petition. Mr. Fitch, Mr. Labby, any perspective here?
I also agree with what Rick just said.
Yeah, I agree as well. How is the increase in room count being addressed with the Board of Health?
I respectfully, I believe that that the Board of Health has approved this addition as a non-bedroom. I know that we are talking about a full room count divided by two, and the floor plans represent that we are within the septic requirements that the Board of Health has requested. I don't know when the hearing was or when the approval was from the Board of Health, but it was, it was presented.
To Novak.
Mr. Chairman, if you wish, I'm willing to make a motion.
Would love to entertain your motion, Mr. Novak.
Do we want to, and I'm sort of jumping the gun, I guess, I guess we should ask if there are any neighbors to speak for or against it.
That's right. We should do that. So if there's any.
And by the way, before you jump to that, Mr. McCoy just put up a a date that those Board of Health approved. a date that those, uh, Board of Health approved, um, our submission. I, yeah.
Can you just read that date off because, uh, a, uh, chat does not, uh?
I know.
It's, it's November sixth, twenty twenty-four, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, whatever. So are there any, uh, neighbors that have any, uh, support or opposition to this proposal? I don't see anyone, but, uh, I don't have the full screen. Jeannie, can you stop sharing or whoever is sharing?
I can.
Great. I don't see, uh, any hands raised, so it seems like it's, uh, it's, the butters are neutral on this. So, uh, Mr. Novak, do you have that motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the, uh, Sherburne zoning board repeals, approve the application for a finding under section one point four point six of the Sherburne zoning bylaw on the grounds that the, uh, uh, based on the plan submitted to the board tonight, um, uh, on the grounds that the, uh, changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and that they will create no new non-conformity. Um, and that we condition, I further suggest that we condition our approval, excuse me, on full compliance with all Board of Health requirements, including those of November sixth, twenty twenty-four, and all other, uh, town requirements for this construction. That's my motion.
I second that motion.
Wonderful. Uh, vote by roll, Mr. Fitch.
Fitch, aye.
Mr. Labby?
Labby, aye.
Mr. Novak?
I vote in favor of my motion.
McBride, aye, uh, passes, uh. Congratulations. Good luck with the addition. I hope there are no surprises.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah. Come along with it.
Thank you.
Um, next item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing for Washington Street Homes LLC for the comprehensive permit pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Laws forty B. Um, and the proposed development, uh, would consist of a three-story, forty-unit rental housing building located at one twenty-one to one twenty-nine Washington Street on fourteen point eight acres. Uh, is the applicant's team, uh, here regarding this, uh, agenda item.
We are.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Um, good evening. Lynn Sweet LDS Consulting Group on behalf of the developer. I'm joined by our team better members, our attorney Paul Haberty, as well as Mike Fabiano from High Point Engineering.
Washington Street?
And our client.
Lynn, I think you jumped the gun. You was calling for the Washington Street project first. So that's just me.
It's just, just Paul. Sorry, Lynn. You're, you'll be, you'll be very quick, uh, quickly next.
Yeah, so I, I did have a discussion with my client and he has decided that he's going to withdraw this application. Um, I don't know how you want to handle this, if you want to, to vote on it tonight, um, to accept the withdrawal, or if you want to wait for me to send you something in writing, it's up to you. Uh, but I will get you something in writing either tomorrow or Friday.
Um, I think Mr. Novak has.
Uh, as I say, we, 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 we appreciate everything Mr. Harvard is doing. I think it's probably good practice if we vote to accept as well. But that's just one member's view. If the other, if the rest of the board doesn't want to do it, we don't have to, and not not a hill to die on.
Uh, I don't think I have an opinion either way, so, um, you know, I'm happy to vote on it if you think that's the best hygiene here unless Paul objects.
No, I think that's a, a great idea.
Okay. Um, so do I have a motion, Mr. Novak?
I, I move that the board accept the withdrawal of Washington Street Homes for the forty B project on Washington Street. Um, and, and, and that we thank the, um, uh, the applicant and his counsel, uh, for, for, for doing this and, 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 and for their offer to send us confirming documentation. That's my motion.
I second that.
Great. I'll give the second to Jonathan and beat me to it. So, um, if we have a vote by roll, please, uh, Mr. Fitch.
Fitch, aye.
Mr. Labby?
Labby, aye.
Mr. Novak?
Associate member, aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Bob and Paul, uh, for your cooperation on this. And, uh, we look forward to, uh, working with you next week on the next project. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, forty-one, continuation of the public hearing, uh, on the revised and remanded application of forty-one North Main Street for a comprehensive permit pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Laws forty B. Uh, the proposed development, uh, contains, uh, twenty-eight garden-style rental units, um, uh, on a parcel of five point eight acres. Uh, is the applicant team here, uh, sleeping. I think they are, but I'll ask again.
We are. Thank you. Sorry about that.
You're very excited to talk to me tonight. That's a good sign.
I didn't pay close attention to the agenda. I heard continuation, so, you know.
Okay, so, um, did you have new information for us this evening, um? If you, if you do, if you want to sort of.
Me too.
Uh, let, uh, tee up what, what that is and, and sort of where we are.
Sure. So I am gonna turn this over to Mike Fabiano from High Point Engineering. He's gonna give you an update on where we are with regard to responding to the stormwater peer review, um, as well as the well. Uh, and, um, also talk about our application for soil, um, testing on the site. So, Mike, take it away.
Thanks, Lynn. Uh, Mike Fabiano with High Point Engineering, the Record Civil Engineers for the project and the applicant. So in order, uh, stormwater, septic, and the well at thirty-three North Main Street. Uh, regarding stormwater, uh, the board may recall that we had submitted, um, a limited stormwater management report or drainage report. That report went to Tetra Tech, your towns consultant, for review. Uh, Tetra Tech did the review. They submitted comments back. We received those comments. Uh, we are in receipt, we are in review, and we are in position to probably no more than ten days, uh, probably seven days, be able to submit a, our response to comments to that letter. Uh, it was about a three-page letter. Um, some of the comments, um, I think we'll have, uh, there'll be some comments that we are going to modify the plan submission. Some comments require slight modifications to the report that was submitted. Other comments will be, uh, either noting or agreeing that a, uh, one of the comments or a few will be parts of a future potential, um, condition or approval. So it's a combination of things, but we, we fully expect to submit a, uh, response to comments to the three-page letter regarding the stormwater review that Tetra Tech supplied and give Tetra Tech and the town sufficient time to, uh, review those comments and, uh, seeking, I don't know if Paul or any of this has been requested, but more than likely an extension request, um, for another month to, uh, to handle that. In addition, uh, the board may recall regarding septic, um, the septic system discussion, uh, we have since filed with the Board of Health a, uh, a formal application for witnessing and testing on-site. Uh, there was some discussion along the way about whether or not, you know, between forty B and state title five requirements or whatnot. But, uh, eventually that all went away and I believe that our client, Mr. Um, Varski, submitted documents, uh, this week. And my understanding about the process is that the, the Board of Health application once gets submitted, uh, there's a trench permit that goes to the board, uh, to the building department for approval and then back to the Board of Health. And another application of the Board of Health goes to the Conservation Commission to get on to an agenda for administrative approval. And then once that goes through the, the Conservation Commission, it goes back to the Board of Health. And then site testing is, uh, is then scheduled in the field. Uh, you know, it's probably a good thing because it's pretty cold out there and, uh, and doing septic system testing and perks at, uh, twenty degrees, you know, it doesn't bode well for anyone besides the person who's doing the testing and the agent who has to be out there in the twenty degrees to do the testing, but for perk tests, it's, uh, you know, it doesn't bode well. So it's probably just as well that it gets delayed, you know, a week or two. Um, so that submission is in and we, you know, it's really based on the approval of the Conservation Commission and when it comes back to the Board of Health, uh, to when we can, uh, mobilize our contractor for testing and, uh, and get that out there. So that's underway. The, uh, the third item has been, uh, with the, the existing public water supply on the thirty-three North Main Street, which is the fireside end adjacent to the property. So we have been seeking clarity on the status of that existing well. And there's a long story, but the short story is, uh, over the course of the last ten days, uh, we have, we have found that the, the well through some email correspondence, some other projects in town, that the well that's located at thirty-three North, the thirty-three North Main Street well, uh, while it is public, it is, uh, that the, on the mass mapper site, it was, when we all did our original research, uh, designated as a interim wellhead protection area, an IWPA. Uh, but if you recall, when I gave, um, comments on the last hearing, there is also a IWPA dissolved criteria on the mass mapper. So we've been seeking information from the DEP to get clarity. Uh, I have an email into, uh, one of the analysts and agents, the DEP, this week that the mass mapper site has been updated, that the, the well that is located at thirty-three North Main Street is one hundred and ninety-eight feet, not the four hundred feet or four hundred and fifty feet that was shown as the IWPA. Uh, one hundred and ninety feet, one hundred and ninety-eight feet fall short of the property line and is fully, uh, encompassing only on the thirty-three North Main Street. I do have a plan, um, just to represent that. It's probably easier to show a, um, as an exhibit. So if I, uh, make sure I get the right. You know, if the board can see the plan, you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, uh, this is a screenshot of the mass mapper site on the lower part of the screen where it says thirty-three North Main Street. This is the, the zone one. So recall, the, the IWPA was, uh, was up here on the site. Uh, but the, uh, apparently the, the DEP has updated, uh, their information and the zone one is now designated, which falls here. So if you look at the site plan, uh, we just superimposed a representation of what we see from that, uh, depiction of the hundred and ninety-eight feet where the well is located on thirty-three North Main Street. This is one hundred and ninety-eight feet, and as you can see, it, uh, it falls short of the, of the property line, which changes designations regarding nitrogen-sensitive, uh, overlay districts. Um, so, so based on, so two things, A, where we're at right now is that alls we have is mass mapper, which is not enough. Uh, we have a, an email exchange that was between other people and not necessarily directed towards us, our, the applicant opponent and this project. Um, so I have a specific email that, uh, message that I've sent soliciting a formal, um, you know, response or at least a confirmatory response from the DEP that the well ID that's designated on thirty-three North Main Street, uh, does represent a hundred and ninety-eight feet, that it is a zone one, uh, and that we can, um, we can rely upon that information as, uh, as fact. Um, being that we believe that's what's going to happen, then, uh, what our expectation is that we are going to take that information and we are going to, uh, take the, the Board of Health letter that was submitted to us, uh, or, you know, through record. I believe it was November nineteenth of twenty twenty-four. And, uh, with this information in the hand, we're going to proceed with a response to comments to that letter. So the board has that as a part of record. I think that's kind of where we're at right now. Stormwater, septic system testing and, uh, and conversation and more details regarding the well that was producing an impact on the forty-one North Ma- Main Street site and, uh, and a classification of nitrogen-sensitive area that we believe is not applicable at this time.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. And this is one of the reasons that we also have been delaying, um, responding to the stormwater peer review because some of their comments related to this as well and why we're holding off, you know, doing our septic testing. So Mike has done yeoman's work in, in researching this and reaching out to a lot of different sources. Um, the information about the wellhead also came from another party that was applying to the EP on another property in the area, and that's why we have a fair level of, of confidence in its, its location because they've already, um, supplied that information to an, and, you know, another party in town. So that was really all we were planning on presenting tonight. Um, we, you know, we, we wish we had written responses to everything, but we think that in a month's time, we are going to be able to answer many of the questions that have been raised, um, by the board until this point in the process.
Less than a month if, uh.
Well, no, we'll, we'll be, when we come back in a month.
Yes.
You know, everyone will have gotten information and we'll have time to review it. And, um, I'm unclear as to where we are, um, with our timeline. And, and I'm, Paul may have a better, better sense as to whether or not we need to do any kind of formal extension, but we're also here to answer any other questions because we know this is brand-new information to you. It's really new information. That's, that's new to us in the last few days, too.
And Lynn, we are gonna have to grant an extension.
Novak.
Um, Mr. Chairman, can I through you ask the applicant team if I'm, if I'm hearing them correctly? I think I am. I just want, sort of want to play it back. Um, on, on the well, um, you, you think you're gonna be able to determine that based on its revised location, the well at thirty-three North Main isn't going to be a problem. You're gonna document that and then the peer reviewer can take a look at it and everyone will figure out where we are in that.
The well, the well location didn't change. It was the, it was the, um, uh, before it was designated as an interim wellhead protection area, and now it's a formal zone one, which has a certain distance that's been calculated and documented. So the well is still where the well is, but the zone of protection is now calculated differently than what we thought.
I'll, I, 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 I stand corrected, but that's why I asked. Thank you. Just, it's the revi- it's not the locate, well location. It's the revised regulatory impact area.
Correct.
Okay, excellent. And, and on, and on, on septic, you're gonna do your testing and that's gonna be what it's gonna be. And we're not there yet, but you've got it. You're moving it ahead as well as you can.
Correct.
And, and, and on, um, water testing and on stormwater, you'll get back to Tetra Tech. And, and on, on well, well water testing, we're still sort of at, at loggerhead. So we want more information and you guys aren't providing it at this time.
I'll let Lynn or, or, uh, Mr. Haverty answer that. We're not, our, our firm is not party to that, to the well. So Lynn, you want to, you want to take that one for Paul?
Paul? Yeah, I mean, I, I believe that is a correct assessment, Rick.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Uh, and septic, just a question, that you think the septic testing will be completed by when? Um.
I, I don't know. I, uh, are, my expectation is that the, the next Conservation Commission meeting is next week. Although the agenda is not posted yet and we submitted, but we haven't heard whether or not it's gonna be heard. And then I'm not too sure process-wise between the Conservation Commission, the building department, when it gets back. So it's, you know, it, it could be, I don't know, it's, it feels like it's two to three weeks out before the testing happens.
The, the conservation, so the septic though, this is, this is just because you're moving soil and you need a trench, trench permit and you need the, you need the, uh, administrative approval from conservation. It's not in a buffer zone.
I don't want to speak on behalf of, uh, of Daryl and the, and the Board of Health, but my understanding, based on what we've heard, and we're not town of Sherburne Board of Health experts, but I, I, my understanding is that when you submit an application, uh, part of the application is a trench permit, which goes to the building department, and then it goes back to the Board of Health. And then the other part of the application goes for administrative approval, but it's a board approval, not an approval through the agent. So it has to be heard at a nightly meeting. And then once they do that administratively, then that goes back to the Board of Health. And then from there, um, the Board of Health agent with the team and the agent in the field will schedule, uh, they're, they'll, they'll tell us what their availability is, and then that's when we go out into the field. So we have to wait for that, that first two process to happen, which I, I would assume that the Conservation Commission night meeting would be the hook, uh, as far as timing goes. But, uh, since I don't have an agenda and I haven't seen a calendar, I don't know.
The, uh, Mr. Lesser's hands raised. Michael?
Michael Lesser, fifty-four Forest Street Conservation Commission. Um, if you filed the administrative approval and it is outside of the buffer zone, then that could be issued by the agent.
Oh, great.
Fantastic. We, we are, we are outside. We're not subject to.
We have it set up, so basically she does it and she automatically sends it.
We have it set up, so basically she does it and she automatically sends it to the Board of Health. Uh, so if it's outside the buffer zone, then it should be quite prompt and quick, uh, if you file, I assume you filed the administrative approval with her. Um, so that's, uh, that's that part of the issue. And I guess in terms of the, uh, water supply issues from the wells, which I think, I don't want to get too much into that because I guess it's not clear what's gonna happen because I only bring it up because I guess there's a request to extend your existing permit. Um, that will be coming before us next Thursday night, even though I guess we need to know what it is your plan to do um, about that, um, but.
So, so we can't, we cannot, so we need to have the permit extended to even consider doing additional testing. Um, but at, at the moment is just to keep what was in place current because there have been the, you know, the extension act and everything like that. So, um, if and when we want to do more testing, it would be helpful to have the permit in place rather than to start all over again.
Well, I'll just alert you that, you, that when you want to do additional work, there's a good chance that you'll have to still have another hearing, uh, that it's not just.
Understood, understood.
Having that extended will not allow you to do additional work without coming before the Conservation Commission for additional permitting, whether it's an extension of the permit or something new. So.
We would certainly come in with whatever the plan is at that given time, but it's helpful to have the permit alive rather than.
Oh, yeah, I can understand that. I just want, just want to be clear that the extension does not carry out you any right to do some more work at the, at this point, given what the, uh, order of conditions are now. Okay, then we'll wait and see how that all plays out.
Uh, thank, thank you for the clarification. We really appreciate it.
Uh, thank you all. So, um, at this point, how much time do you think we need for the extension, Paul? Um, you know, I don't know what your thoughts are. It sounds like you'll have some more responses next week and then there could be, you know, some more testing after that, um, so.
For now, I think thirty days and then we can schedule another hearing and reassess at that point.
Okay, so do you want to discuss, uh, a date for another hearing unless there's any additional questions from my board, uh, or the public uh, regarding the information shared this evening? Um, I, I see Daryl's hands raised, but I'm gonna go to my board first and see if they have any more questions and then I'll, I'll sort of, I'll, uh, take Daryl's question.
None from me, Mr. Chair.
Great, uh, Daryl, I see, uh, your hand trades.
Okay, just in case it's helpful, uh, there are two zones that apply to mass D E P public water supplies. One is a zone one, which based on the diameter without knowing the exact flow for that one, that seems to be the circle that you're seeing now, drawn around the well at the, uh, the neighboring property. Um, the importance of the zone well is, uh, the zone one is that when possible, although this is a much older well than, um, certainly what would be installed now, is that the owner has control of the land within the zone one and thus the activities, because that's considered the most influential on the well. Uh, what happens next is the zone two. If you can't define the zone two by modeling and when you have bedrock wells, it's extraordinarily difficult to do it, so they default uh, to a, an I W P A, um, interim wellhead protection area, which is just a bigger circle, essentially, uh, otherwise, in an overburden aquifer, you'd see something shaped like an amoeba. Uh, that's really defining where water is being drawn from. There may be additional restrictions about what can be taking place within the I W P A. So that's where speaking to mass D E P further about it is going to be very helpful to you, I think, so.
One hundred percent agree.
What you're seeing now is probably the zone one. It's not the I W P A or the zone two.
Correct. It, it is definitely the zone one and the, uh, the I W P A, at least on mass mapper, uh, is noted as dissolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I guess, um, thank you, Daryl, picking a date, uh, for the next meeting and continuation, um, looking at my calendar.
I'll, I'll do a little preempt if we can avoid the, the, the twelfth. I've already got another hearing that night.
The twelfth, you're, two twelve.
Yeah, that, that Wednesday night, but anything else is open that week, um. Paul, how's, how's your, how's your schedule, Paul, and, um?
I am, I'm now of the country, uh, the week of the sixteenth to the twenty-third.
Okay, so, but you're, you're in the week before.
Yes.
Eleven or thirteen, um, work for anyone, everyone?
The, the thirteenth.
Eleven, eleven, I can.
Go ahead, Jonathan. Um, I, I could probably do the eleventh, I'm out, the thirteenth to the eighteenth, so.
I just, I just, I just want to hear from Paul, too.
Yeah.
I can do the eleventh.
Okay.
Mr. Labby, eleven.
I believe I can do the eleventh as well.
Okay. Uh, I will move to continue, uh, this hearing until February eleventh at seven P M. Do I have any objections to that motion?
You have a second.
I have a second. Uh, wonderful. So we'll vote to continue, uh, the hearing for the comprehensive permit for the Washington Street forty B project. Um, to, uh, Mr. Mr. Novak.
Sorry, minor, minor point of order. Can we amend the motion to that we continue it based on an extension to be received from Mr. Haverty through? And Paul, fill on, give me the date. I'm gonna fill in there.
Um, so today's the fifteenth, so through February fifteenth.
That's a Saturday. That's a Saturday. Do you want to?
We can make it to the eleventh, why don't we make it to the eleventh, uh, or the twelfth, if that works, so we can deal with, uh, the extension next year.
So I, I always am reluctant to do it like a day or two after the scheduled hearing, just in case there's some sort of catastrophe that prevents it from moving forward.
That's what I was thinking, like snow.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, a power outage, you know, since these are on Zoom.
What about the nineteenth?
I, I mean, twenty-first is a Friday. Why don't I just continue it to the twenty-first?
That's fine.
Extended, I mean.
So I will accept your, um, modified motion, modification to my motion, Mr. Novak, to, uh, continue it subject to the continuation until the twenty-first. Um, do I have a second to that modification?
You do.
Great. Uh, do I have a vote for Mr. Fitch?
Fitch, aye.
Mr. Labby.
Labby, aye.
Mr. Novak.
Novak, aye.
McBride, aye. Uh, we will see you on the eleventh with a continuation, subject to an agreement, a, a letter that we will receive, that there'll be continuation until the twenty-first.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You.
Move to adjourn?
Uh, yes. Uh, do I have a, I think I have a motion to adjourn, not a question, so I'm gonna second that motion. Uh, Mr. Fitch?
Fitch, aye.
Mr. Labby.
Labby, aye.
Mr. Novak.
Okay, if you beg.
Uh, and Mr. McBride, aye. Uh, we, we have a, a raised hand from Mr. Fitch.
No, that was a wave goodbye.
I'll do wave goodbye. Okay, wonderful.
With all five fingers for once, good.
Good night, everyone.
Sure.